Are you sure? Does that sound very comfortable? Is the bomb working? Did I say something bad? I just, say what? Alright. Alright, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Everyone please rise for the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for attending tonight. Our first item is our January graduate, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Malley.
I think there are people running to get to the graduate now. More of education in all of our esteemed guests. Thank you for being here tonight to congratulate our January graduate, Mr. Ronald Christman. He is, um, he is one of a few, but he is the one here tonight. Ronald has quite a journey. He, uh, has decided to graduate us early, so he's not one of those that, from last year's cohort, he is to graduate this June. But, he is goal-oriented, has employment in mind, and says, "You know what? Think I need to be done and get out into the workforce." So we congratulate him to be a goal-oriented student that he is, have a great path, is already employed, and ready to join the workforce and be a productive citizen for here us, for us here in the city of Gloversville. So, this is Ronald Christman, our graduate for 2022, June, but graduating early today. Congratulations. His diploma as a graduate. And, uh, parents, congratulations. You're a huge part of this. Thank you very much for everything. Good luck to you.
Let's take fifteen.
Alright. Uh, next item on our agenda is the class of 2022 senior trip information. Turn it over to advisors and our students.
Hello, can we just, can we just start? I'm Noah Cook, I'm the class president.
I'm Jack Bruce, I'm the class treasurer.
I'm Sydney Canty, I'm the class secretary.
I'm Simon Bruce, I'm the vice president.
And we're just here to talk to you about where we're going for our class trip. We, it was voted on to go to Rocking Horse Ranch. It's a resort, it's about an hour south of Albany. Uh, it's, it's a lot of places, a lot of stuff to do there. There's like, there's a pool, there's a water slide, there's bungee jumping and laser tag and mini golf, and archery and horseback riding, there's different sports fields to do. So there's a lot of activities to do there. The educational aspect of it, what we would do before that is we would go to the Hudson River Walk. Uh, it's a historic park. Uh, you'd walk across the bridge, the bridge is about 1.2 miles, with a guide sort of giving you details about the Hudson River. It would cost each student about $175, uh, with the class would pay half. So each student would pay $175 for the transportation and for the ticket, that also includes food, so... It's all-inclusive.
Um, so voting for it was done via Google Classroom, um, which we informed about, um, to the parent square Gmail, um, and also social media from us. Um, so we would like to think that all of the senior class was available to vote for their senior trip. We had two options, and the Hudson River Walk and Rocking Horse Ranch was the one that everyone agreed upon. And we get our, we're, we're still soliciting donations from local businesses, um, just to possibly help the cost that the students pay go down. But any extra money we have will just go back to our class clearly, um, and we're still fundraising.
I think that's all we got.
Do you guys have any questions for us, any information that you want to know regarding? A quick one, up there is, up there is a website for it. You guys feel free to go on to it if you want.
There's a lot, there is a lot to do there. Uh, I'm sure you couldn't do everything in one day if you wanted to, so that's, that's good that there's a lot for us to do there.
Are you guys driving down and coming back, or just coming?
We're leaving Sunday, and then we'll be back on Monday.
Okay. You're spending the night?
Yes, at the resort.
What's the date of the trip?
Uh, the trip will be June 5th after prom, and it'll end June 6th, that Monday.
Yep. And that Monday's students aren't going to be held against them. If they're not going to school, it's all going to be excused. It's not going to count as any kind of absence or anything.
Do you think, why is that? Why, why, why might the board and the administration allow that date to not be an absence for anyone who participates on the trip?
Because we have an educational aspect to the trip.
Educational aspect.
We didn't get as many votes as we anticipated. Um, we're hoping that will, um, portray how many students are interested in going. Um, we did have an issue with the votes where it was, we had to take down the original poll and put up another one, so we might have students that voted originally and never did it the second time. Um, but we're hoping for most of our student body.
We're hoping everybody in the class could come, really. That's, that's the goal, but the voting definitely didn't show, I think, how many kids are actually going to go. I know myself, I forgot to vote. So I'm, and then there were a handful of kids who just didn't feel like voting, or just said, "No, we'll just see whatever wins, whatever wins, and maybe I'll go." So, I think there were sixty to seventy kids that voted, around there, around sixty, something like that, who actually did vote. So, I'm assuming out of those sixty, they're all interested in going. So we're hoping to see as many as we can, but we don't know actual number.
But if we don't have more students, the costs would go down for the students who do go. Um, lessening the bus fares and how much we have to pay.
How many buses are there?
We have two, sir, at this point. Was the cost to the student 175, or is the cost 175 and then half paid for the class half for the student?
So the actual ticket would be about 350. We pay for that, so the cost for the students, I'm sorry. I think I misspoke on that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Three, uh, full meals, plus there is a coffee and pastry bar that is just available at, um, throughout the day. Uh, they're also throwing in for us a PJ and a PJ dance party on that Sunday night that just will exclusively be...
Do you have a question for the board? I agree with this, uh, our committee here, they have a new proposal. The board approves it because of the educational component that, uh, Ms. Cook and the students put together, and they presented it to me, and, and I said, I had my approval, but obviously the board's a final say on that. But it certainly warrants an excused absence because there is an educational component. And the activities certainly can be argued, I'm sure Mr. DeMagistris would agree, that the physical activities would warrant, uh, an excused absence in and of themselves, but I felt better with the educational piece as well.
Take pictures.
Have a good time. Enjoy it, guys. Try to get as many kids to go with you as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda, we have a presentation from the Social Studies Department. Ms. Lambert, Mr. Rumley.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Arthur Rumley, and I'm just here to present the, uh, information about the 2021, 2022 Social Studies Department from the high school. I think the, the big theme with the Social Studies Department this year in 2021, 2022 is transitions. Lot of changes going on in the Social Studies Department at the high school level. Um, we're dealing with two new regents exams that the students have never taken before this year. Got a new department chair this year. Um, we have new hires, so, um, just want to take everybody through that a little bit, and some things going on with the department. Just a little bit about me. I'm local, graduated from BP in 94, SUNY kid, SUNY Plattsburgh, SUNY Albany. Um, studied abroad, seen a little bit of the world. And I'm just looking forward to, uh, being the new department chair. I'm in my 23rd year. And I've taught the whole gamut in my days at Gloversville. I've taught eighth grade US history, ninth grade global, 10th grade global, 11th grade US history. I've taught PIG and econ, so I think I can relate a little bit to all the different teachers in our department. Um, so looking forward to the challenge of that. Um, that's just, uh, our Social Studies Department, the, the members that are there. If you know them at all, maybe you say, "Good teachers, strong personalities," right, in the Social Studies Department. Glenn Martin retired this year, and, um, the new hire is Henry Best, we hired, um, a month ago. So far, so good with Henry. I think he's doing a really good job so far. Um, he's, uh, Sue Fitzgerald is his mentor, she's doing a good job in working with him. Um, he's teaching econ and PIG this year, so he's off to a really good start, Henry Best. Just thought, just show everybody the, the current courses that we offer at the high school. You see the, the basic required courses. We also, we offer a lot of college courses, Social Studies Department at the high school. High school students can come out of, uh, uh, their, their time in, in the Social Studies Department, you can have a full semester's worth of college credits. You know, going through the Social Studies Department. We're really proud of that. And with Len retiring, we're working real hard on trying to maintain that program for the students. We really think it's really good opportunities for the kids to have the chance to take Supa, Supa Sociology, Supa Econ. This year I'm teaching a college US history course we're doing through FMCC. So we're really working hard to try to maintain those college courses as, as best we can. Um, this year too, you see what's new this year, um, American Military History, uh, Mr. Schneider's teaching that. And, uh, Mr. Kremler's teaching local US history as electives. And so far, the early feedback on those elective courses has been very positive. You know, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Kremler are really good teachers, they're engaging. And I think that the, you know, students, they could be sitting in a study hall, but they're learning local history, military history from Mr. Kremler and Mr. Schneider. So I, I think we're off to a really good start with those electives. And we'll have to see next year with the schedule and, and, um, if we can maintain those, but I think it's a nice opportunity for the students. As far as the, the big challenges that I see for the Social Studies Department this year moving forward. I mean, to me, clear and present, clear and present challenge is the new requirements of those new regents exams. Right, we have, um, there, there are new types of questions, it's a real shift in what the students are being assessed on. So we're working real hard, um, trying to get ready, um, get the kids prepared taking those new style of questions this year. You know, the last two years have been the pandemic, so this is the first time we're going to take the global, and it's also the first time we're taking US history, um, those new tests. Also, if you, if you look at like the list of teachers in the department, we're getting a little bit long in the tooth. Like you see Len retiring, um, in January, um, his wife Kelly's going to retire in June. I think you're going to see in the next five to 10 years, a lot of turnover in the Social Studies Department. So we really, you know, hiring new candidates, you know, we, Rich and I in the committee worked real hard. I, I, I think we did really well with Henry this time around. You know, replacing these experienced teachers can be a challenge, just try to maintain our programming. Okay? So, just a, real quick with goals, what we're working on, I already talked a lot, like the focus is, you know, preparing for these new assessments. I really think like the key is collaboration. The state is really focusing on students interpreting documents. It's a move where, instead of just knowing, um, who caused the Russian Revolution, you get a document on the Russian Revolution, you have to interpret it. So I spend a lot of time digging through documents, making new types of questions. I think if we can share this stuff amongst the department, it will help everybody, and, and help the students prepare for these tests. So, um, Mr. Wojcicki's prepared the superintendent's conference day. I asked him if we had time to collaborate and share resources amongst the department, trying to get ready for these tests. Trying to support student achievement the best we can on our required courses, on state assessments. Um, trying to maintain our programming as best we can, and, um, trying to support global students a little bit. The last thing I leave you with here today, I just want you to think about something. I was asked, and maybe you presented a little bit of data, this is the last four years of state assessments that we had before the pandemic. And if, what I have up here is, uh, global's at the top and US history's at the bottom. Um, how students across New York State have done, and how we have done in Gloversville, in our district. And I don't know if anything jumps out to you when you look at that data. But to me, you see the difference between how students across the board do on global, across New York State, and how students do in US history. Across New York State. And, why is there such a discrepancy between how students do across New York State on global compared to how they do in US history? Couple reasons, I mean, would some people say, "Well, gee, are globals, are global history teachers across New York State just not as good as US history teachers across New York State?" Is that the issue here? I can tell a couple of things. So global's been a statewide issue. Students' achievement on global's been a statewide issue for a long time now. New York State does not score the global exam the same way they score the US history exam. The, the scoring guide is not the same, and we can go back through and look at like the scoring grids that they give from the state. So, that presents a challenge in and of itself. Um, also, I think the global curriculum is just a little bit more unfamiliar to students than US history. You know, you're teaching students about, you know, Russia, China, Chinese dynasties, very unfamiliar to them. It's tough to teach them, so we're working on, again, as a department, to get better at our global scores, really trying to collaborate at best practices and sharing resources. And the last thing that I, I just wanted maybe the board to think about, um, as far as programming. There's been a few years where we tried to have a, a global lab for 10th graders. Um, we've had AIS for students for like 11th and 12th graders that have failed global, with AIS. But, in a few years, we had like a global 10 lab, so that's, if your student's struggling in global, we can assign you to Mr. Rogers, who's teaching a global lab that will work with the students and give them like extra help, understanding the material. There are a few times we've done it, I think it's been very successful. Um, I know scheduling is always like a, a tough puzzle to figure out, but it's just something maybe to keep in mind. Like we have some of the, you know, we have, we teach freshman seminar, and we teach social citizenship. I don't know if freshman seminar, social, social citizenship help us with this, with our global scores. It's just something to think about as we move forward, maybe trying to supplement our 10th graders in, um, going through that, the global curriculum, the new curriculum. Does anybody have any questions about social studies in the high school?
You were saying that the, uh, super courses?
Yeah. No, I, we have, we've been having, um, teachers have been training, have been getting training at Supa, so we have, we very much plan to maintain those Supa courses going forward. People have gone up, going out to Syracuse and getting the training that you need to get. So we can, we can roll right into that and not lose, lose those programs.
Art, I think it's interesting, we're kind of closing out, it's like the last five years on the state, to think Gloversville scores and the state scores, yet, uh, students with disability, we consistently outscore the state average by almost 10 points. It's noteworthy.
Well, that, that, that's just students, that's the, you know, I'm sorry, let me just clarify that, students in higher income. That's just percentage of students with disabilities that take the test.
I'm sorry, that's, that's, I should explain that more clearly. So, just to show you that, uh, students with disabilities, we have a much higher percentage than the state. You know what I mean? And it's just something, again, we just need to think about. I think, knowing that global, the state grades global harder, and it's, global's harder for kids across the state, I just think we, we have to kind of keep that in mind when we schedule our courses, when we think about our programs, and maybe, again, just thinking about remediating, you know, 10th grade students.
What's the, uh, the time period for the local history?
Local history's half year.
No, no, I, it, the curriculum.
Um, I think he's still, I, I think it's, um, he starts at the beginning, I mean, there's a lot of like revolutionary history around here, so I think he starts with there and he just moves it forward. I think it's, uh, it's very organic at this point from when I've talked to Mr. Kremler, so he's still working that, I know, but, he said he spent a lot of time on the revolutionary history, just because there's so much of that around here. So I, I think he's still working that out. I'm not sure how far he's going to get this year.
Is the new 10th grade, uh, global test working out in the second half?
That's correct. Yep, that's correct. Yeah, it used to be on both, global used to be tested on 9th and 10th grade this year, it's just tested on the 10th grade.
So I think these are prepared, so we're going to ask for all three years.
I think so too, yeah. Thank you.
Hi, I am Danielle Lambert, and I am the department chair for Gloversville Middle School of Social Studies. And, um, I just wanted to start out by saying that, um, the kids are really working hard to close the gap from the, the skills deficit that they had, um, because of COVID. When they came in in September, it was pretty surprising. Um, the, um, the basic writing skills had really diminished to the point where we found we were working on basic sentence structure, capitalization, punctuation, things that you would have in ELA at much earlier grades. Um, and yet there were things that needed to be talked about and reinforced even in the social studies environment. So that changed our focus for the year, and we started to really sort of backpedal away from maybe the more higher concept analytical stuff that we might launch into in September, and do a lot of basic writing. In staying in content and staying on schedule with content, the skills we worked on were a lot of shoring up their ELA skills so that they could write good coherent answers to questions. So we've spent this year doing just a tremendous amount of work with that, a lot of writing, um, to the point where we've had, at the eighth grade level, we've had, you know, individual conferencing, the way you would with a writing program, in terms of writing social studies essays, and we've worked hard on building that up, and I finally feel confident, here it is March, that we're, we're moving forward with a stronger writing, um, uh, stability underneath us. And we're moving from here into the essay skit, the essay, um, structures that we want them to carry with them into high school. So, um, moving into DBQs at the, the sixth grade level, moving into, um, argumentative essays, claim response, um, claim evidence type work. And then by eighth grade, we're moving into full fledged enduring issues essays, which they have to do in the high school. So, uh, my apologies to Danielle over there, because I didn't answer today's email with handing out handouts. So I'm just going to pass these around. This is the eighth grade exit essay template that we've created, so that then the kids, um, by the time they leave eighth grade, we expect them to be able to write an essay as we follow this template. Now, we work with them through eighth grade on filling in the template, and then giving them more and more independence on the template. The goal is that by the end of eighth grade, they are able to write an essay without the template in front of them. Of course, they get to keep that, so hopefully they'll bring it with them and remind themselves of it when they start in ninth grade. But that helps Art and the high school to be able to say, "Look, I know your teachers have worked with you on this. I know that this is what we're expecting you to be able to do." So it gives us a, um, a continuity between the high school and the middle school. Okay, um, let's see where I want to go next. Um, also, I'm looking forward to Friday's work, um, during our superintendent's conference day with Art, because we have, um, before COVID, uh, eight, middle school teachers went to the state conference, um, and worked with, a, and attended the, the sessions that told us about the, the upcoming region's changes. And we worked to incorporate a lot of those skills into what we were doing here in the middle school. So that they worked on their CRQs, they worked on, um, analyzing, um, documents, they worked on significance, and they worked on, um, understanding whether something is widespread and its significance or not, and why, and how you analyze that, and how you explain that. And so, um, those sorts of things, and the different multiple choice stems that are coming up. Um, those are all things that we looked at prior to COVID. I'm looking forward to talking to Art on Friday about how that's changed, and what they need us to tweak down here, so that we can best meet up with what you need up there. So that's really timely, and I'm glad that we're coming up on that, because the kids are just about the point where they can handle that. We've had to work to get to that point. Our position for the COVID, um, era is that, for all the negatives, the positives, we all got really good at technology. So moving forward, we're all excited about that. Um, one big change is that some of us didn't have Promethean boards up to now, so now we've got those, and we're all, um, planning on, you know, learning what we can about them and using them to the best of our ability. Other than that, Marcia, Marcia Gillis over there, um, is, what, president of the board of the museum, is that right? Yes. And so we've been utilizing that resource, and she's bringing, bringing in artifacts, and we've had access to really incredible things to show kids, museum quality pieces, um, pertaining to the different topics that we're studying, especially now that we're into World War I, and then moving forward from there. So we're really happy and excited about that. Um, and lastly, um, there are really no pressing issues in anything that we're asking for, which feel like, you know, we had to backpedal and back engineer what we were doing, but we're feeling pretty confident at this point moving forward. Any questions? No, okay. Well, what, it takes a lot of time, right? So it takes a lot of structuring. So what, what I have found useful is, um, because we, we, um, sort of automated so much of what we did during COVID, because we had to, to give it remotely and we weren't doing, going with live classes. So we have a lot of backlog of, um, slides with, with questions attached that we might not normally use repetitively in a classroom situation. So what I'm doing is, um, I'll give them an essay, I'll work them through with the essay for a couple of days. And then when they're working on the essay, I'll then give them sort of the automated lessons on content, and then start working with them one-on-one on their writing while the other kids are working on that for a few days. So each kid is getting a writing consultation to the point of mastering. And then I do it as a formative, not a summative, so that if they've worked through the whole thing with me, i- in order to fix the things that I asked them to fix and to edit with me, and I teach them editing skills, if they've worked on that with me, they get 100 for their effort for that piece. So they get excited, because it's a, it's, they're working on something and it's hard, but they're guaranteed a 100 if they actually come in and do it. If they don't actually come in and work with me to get to that point, then I grade it however it deserves to be graded by the rubric. And, so that's how we do it. So I, I break that time in by automating the rest of it for a week or so afterwards.
Are you probably going to grade it?
We, we, at every one of our department meetings, we talk about sort of baking the cake. So taking this as the end product and back-engineering it, and how could that break down through eighth, seventh, and sixth? So they break out different pieces and decide what writing things they're going to do, but the, the end game is always in mind. Anything else? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. If anybody here, if anybody out in the virtual world has a comment, please leave it in the chat, the Facebook page, and someone from the district will reach out to you. Next, the board discussion. Board of Education minutes from the February 7th meeting. Any comments or questions on those? Any comments or questions on those? Motion to approve those. John selected by Kevin. All in favor? Any other topics for board discussion tonight? All right, we'll move on to the next item, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I just want to thank our presenters. And before I get into my report, just want to acknowledge several donations and retirements in appendix A, back page of this front. We have a hundred dollar donation from the Hundred Women Who Care for the Backpack Program. We have a $500 donation for the Backpack Program from Brown's Ford. In our admin meeting, LaShawn Hawkins, who oversees this, this program, told us we should be in good shape for several years. We've had a lot of generous donations this, in the last few months. Hundred Women Who Care, we gave us 15,000 or something a few months ago. So the generosity that we receive from the community is greatly appreciated and will be of good use for our students. And also I want to acknowledge the retirement of Joyce Van Ostrin, food service helper for the past 18 years and wish her a very long, healthy, happy retirement. Mr. Demagistrus is going to go into greater detail, but I do want to say that the last week or two have been pretty outstanding for our student, winner of student athletes. Our boys' basketball team lost a game yesterday in the sectional championship. I think that's something that kind of surprised a lot of people, that they didn't follow the team throughout the season, probably didn't anticipate them reaching the sectional championship game. So certainly a strong finish to a, well, it was a tough year, starting off with a lot of injuries and stuff. I also wanted to congratulate Dane Dombek and Zoe Tessie for reaching the state competition level. And I think Mr. Demagistrus is going to go into greater detail about their accomplishments, but certainly want to congratulate those student athletes. And thank Mr. Tommaly and the High School Administration for really putting on a show of appreciation and support for those student athletes competing at the state level. I also wanted to commend our project leadaway team that had cardboard sled race at Oak Mountain this past weekend. And one of our senior teams was awarded for the fastest sled. Danielle's son, Cooper, was on that team, I believe. I saw the video, that sled had to be slowed down like it was coming off an aircraft carrier. And so they really did a nice job and it looked like a great event and I appreciate, and Mr. By was there filming and appreciate the support that they received as well. I want to give a plug. Across the building here, we have our high school drama club that is performing. They're rehearsing for the musical Rent School Edition, which will take place this Thursday through Saturday this week at 7:00 PM. Tickets are to be purchased at the door. And I will be there Thursday night, excited. This is a PG-13 production and I applaud them for tackling what may, some may consider mature content. Certainly those who may know about the Broadway Rent production, this is a school edition. It has been watered down, certainly from its original form to make it palatable for public schools, but you know, the, the social issues it tackles, you know, the students wanted to do this and I think those who come will be impressed with the performances from our students. I think all can agree that, that Jen.
Flynn.
Flynn, thank you. Ben Flynn and her staff do a great job with every production that they set their sights on. So we fully anticipate this to be a successful production and we encourage the community to come out and support it. I want to thank Dr. Wojewski again for his leadership on the superintendent's conference day agenda. This Friday will be our superintendent's conference day, so those out listening, there's no school for students this Friday. Our staff will be reporting. I'm going to ask Dr. Wojewski just to kind of give an overview of what he's put together. He and the department chairperson is in the building administration.
So we do have 52 workshops and meetings scheduled for Friday, so it's fantastic. I'd like to express my appreciation to our colleagues who volunteered their time to facilitate those workshops. And we certainly wouldn't have such a robust agenda without their willingness to lead these trainings and discussions. So wide range of topics, Superintendent Halloran did include that agenda. Have been some changes since then, but we've only added additional workshops, so it's great to see. We're also really looking forward to our speakers on the, the morning of Friday. They're traveling to us from Louisiana and Mississippi respectively. I've referenced DJ Batiste and Donna Porter during previous board meetings. They're a former student and teacher duo who travel the country sharing their stories about the positive impact of building trusting relationships between students and families and entities here in our school. So it's going to be a great day and again, thank you to the faculty and staff who have gone above and beyond to help the day become all that it can be.
Before you take my camera off of him, one of the productions for that day is our Grow Your Own program.
Oh, yes.
As I mentioned in the last board meeting, again, Dr. Wojewski with help sets this place, a partnership between Boversville, FMCC, Casanova, Clarkson University, and our CSEA staff will be receiving a presentation on this. There is a flyer in appendix E, excuse me, appendix D, Chris, I don't know if you want to elaborate a little bit on Grow Your Own?
Sure. So Superintendent Halloran and I met with college stakeholders, again, a few weeks ago, I think it was February 25th. And we're making good progress with the program and hope to have it fully operational for our high school students to start next school year in September. As Dave mentioned, this Friday, we have representatives from FMCC, from Casanova, from Clarkson, who'll be on campus here in the middle school auditorium to present to our non-instructional staff and any adults who are interested in earning college credits, a degree in education, their certification, will learn more about that opportunity on Friday and we'll talk about how they can participate and further their career goals.
Mr. Rowley spoke about their grade, and there's so much in this department, and that's something we're seeing across the board in, in education. And the Grow Your Own program is designed for just that, to, to help pave the way, illuminate a path for people in our community, both students, current students and adults, some whom already work in your organization, say in a capacity of a, it could be any capacity that's non-instructional. An aide, a TA, could be a bus driver, could be a custodian, could be a clerical, a food service worker. This provides an opportunity for people to start accumulating college credits and, and realize that, you know, with some time and effort, if they want to be an educator, they can achieve their goals. Another aspect, this program is designed for students in high school who can accumulate college credit and if they wanted to, they could start working as an aide or a TA shortly after high school. And we have openings across the district right now. And that's something that's not just unique to Boversville. Educational institutions across the country are recording shortages of labor. It is superintendents, it is administrators, it is teachers and it is all support staff personnel. So if people want to work, there's opportunities here in the Boversville school system and I applaud Chris's efforts in really helping this get off the ground here in Boversville. I just want to go back to the, the superintendent's conference day agenda. He did 52 trainings and if you look at the agenda, you realize how much work went into meeting what was the, the request from the staff and marrying that with the priorities of the district. And I think he's done a great job of putting together an agenda that does exactly that. We have things we want the staff to, to be trained on and certainly we want them and their, their needs and desires to be met as well. So this is something we hope to achieve for all of our conference day agendas and not have an 11th hour, oh, we got to get, keep people busy and, and do just that, keep staff busy. It's not what the conference days are set aside for. Set aside for professional development, for people to reflect on the practices, to collaborate. And we're excited and I can't thank Chris enough for taking the leadership role on this. Any questions on our conference day agenda, Grow Your Own?
Absolutely, Dave. I've been in education for 22 years, I've, I've never seen a conference agenda, others detailed, this is in the options, so it's, it's quite impressive.
I agree, thank you.
I'll add to that, and I've spoken to a lot of students, they certainly pay all, the choices that are out there. It's one of, is there, there needs to settle, just a rod?
Absolutely, it should be a one-size-fits-all. There's going to be times when we bring staff together for messages like the one that we were opening the day with, but to provide opportunities and choice is essential in this day and age. I just want to, I mentioned the busing partnership with the city of Boversville, you know, it's been a place for several years. We have between 40 and 60 students taking advantage of that each day, but not having that bus not come over the hill has been something we've been working on. And for the last two weeks, we have had the city transit bus come over the hill. At 7:40, it drops off between the middle school and high school. And at appendix E, you can see the different pickups throughout the city. Encourage anybody who is struggling to get their middle school or high school student to campus in the morning, to go on our website and you can see the schedule there of what time students can be picked up throughout the city. It pretty much covers almost the entire city. So students can be dropped off as though they're a rural student in a rural district. City school systems do not transport students in Boversville and I appreciate the Board of Education's commitment to making that an opportunity for those who want it, those who need it, that it is there and it's free for our students. We know attendance has been a concern long before COVID came and it's a challenge in this district. I say it almost every board meeting, it's probably the greatest challenge we face is getting students to campus. So this is a one final step that I don't know what else we can do as far as the, aside from continuing to build better relationships with the home and encourage your parents to be our partners in getting their children to school and ensuring our lessons are, are engaging and, you know, fun and enlightening, obviously. But we really need students and parents to, to buy into the importance of being in school each and every day. Can't reiterate that enough. We're having a, a meeting this week with the probation department, DSS, city police department. We invited county board supervisors to come brainstorm along with us to hear some of our ideas. And Jim Carter has put together a presentation on our, our attendance for, as a school system. And our chronic absenteeism is staggering. Following that meeting, I might make some of that information available because I'm going to wait until this meeting we have on Wednesday, but I think it's important for people to realize just what a dilemma it is. Instead of hearing me just say at board meetings, I don't know how many people are hearing the message properly, but our absenteeism in Boversville is a real, real problem. And what I'm saying, talking about is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of elementary aged students missing 30 or 40 to 50, 60 school days a year. If that's not a problem, I don't know what is. It's frustrating. I can't, I can't reiterate that enough. So we really need those, those community partners to help us get students to school and apply whatever pressure they can because its future is at stake when kids miss school.
We feel the difference the last two weeks since they've adopted, uh, statistics.
You know, I'll, I'll say this, the last few weeks, all the buildings do a pretty good job, Boulevard in particular does a nice job every week of sending us their attendance rates. They're going back up, but they're still hovering around 90% and state of New York sets that threshold at 95% daily attendance rate. That is the acceptable limit of what a school building should be. And we reached that maybe the first day of school and that's about it.
Is this, is this problem just with Boversville or do we see it with our surrounding school districts?
Surrounding schools, districts do not have it like we do. No, this is, this is a pretty unique to Boversville and our region. City districts, I'm guessing in general, have it. I have run the comparisons with, say Schenectady, Albany, Troy. That's something we certainly can do to see if there's a correlation. I'm guessing there is going to be, you're going to see lower attendance in those districts. But I don't really want to compare ourselves to larger urban centers. You know, we, we are a Fulton County school, we're somewhere between urban and rural. You know, this is a small town in the grand scheme of things. So in the small town, people should value education and realize that this is a great place for the kids to be. And it's not just a high school issue. You'd think that attendance would be high school kids telling their mother, I'm not getting out of bed, you know, I can't physically make them go. This is an elementary issue. You know, this starts off, I think second grade is one of our worst attendance grades in the district. Probably is the worst attending grade in the district. So it, it's something that we're working hard at. COVID has been difficult. The winter time is difficult. Not enough people are frankly trolling their sidewalks in the city during the winter, just being honest. There's huge water, rain puddles in the cities. I see kids walking in the streets. That's why we're trying to provide as much transportation as possible. But parents, guardians need to get their kids to school. There's no way around it and there's no excuses for the amount of absences we see. People who need to hear this message probably aren't the people who are listening to this board meeting, unfortunately. I'm guessing the people listening to this board meeting are people who are engaged in their children's education and those kids are attending school. So we need to get those who are disengaged, both students and parents. I will keep on talking about this as long as I'm superintendent of this district because it's that important. And I know, I feel bad because I feel like I sound like a broken record and I will keep on trying to come up with ways and the admin team and, you know, we have good people, Jim Carter, Andy Schleizak, you know, the street teams that Andy's put together, LaShawn is doing the elementary. We're working hard, but we cannot get people to physically get out of bed and get to school. So it's a challenge. It's a real challenge. And anybody who's listening who might have ideas of what we can do, we are all ears and it's certainly welcome anybody's input who might be out there listening to this board meeting. Tenure update. Meeting to be held this week and in the next few weeks with candidates who I will be recommending for tenure and those candidates will be in front of the Board of Education for recommendation in April. Obviously tenure does not take effect until following September and some of them, some of them are into November, but that'll be made clear to the candidates. But we will have all those candidates who will be recommended and there's some who will not be and the board will be made aware of that as well. So those conversations will be taking place in the next few weeks. Bills and grounds hiring, anybody interested in employment? We have three cleaner positions available in the district. I encourage all interested candidates to contact Mr. Chad Rulson, our director of facilities at 775-5781. Again, that is Mr. Chad Rulson at 775-5781 for three cleaning positions available in the district right now. There's a lot of opportunity for people who may end up, who may start off on second shift who can find themselves moved to first shift, which would be a schedule, growing with your children's schedule if they have kids in schools. So I hope people don't rule themselves out. We will work with you. And there's some people prefer second shift and there might be opportunities for somebody to start right off on the day shift. So I hope, I hope interested people take advantage of these opportunities. Park Terrace Observation Hive that the board approved about six months ago has been installed and it is awaiting bees, which I believe will come in April. And my hope is to hold a board meeting over there in the near future so the board can see the hive. How I pictured it and how it is is different. It's really cool. It's on a swivel where the bees can still get in and out side and the kids can see both sides of the hive. It's really neat. And we're designed, it did a nice job and we appreciate that grant and those who are willing to work with it. It's great because kids from other buildings will be able to come up, it's like a back hallway and they'll be able to hold like little field trips almost to that hive without disturbing Park Terrace School at all. And they'll be able to come in and out, obviously with coordination between the building administration, but it's really neat opportunity. And people have approached me about, they want to do a mural of like the inside of a beehive on that stairwell, which would be really neat to kind of make the experience better for the children. I'm going to turn it back over to Chris again to talk about the SCL, Social Emotional Learning Curriculum Committee work that took place towards the end of last week.
So since September, we've been working with an educational consulting and coaching firm, PLC Associates. We have two coaches who have been working with us particularly on social emotional learning. And last Wednesday and Thursday, one of the coaches visited us in person from Colorado and he worked with our SCL committees. We have one at the elementary level and one at the secondary level. And he worked with them for six hours each over the course of those two days. And we developed an action plan for the remainder of this year as well as beginning to plans for some summer professional development and looking at what we can do next year to really immerse social emotional learning into our daily operations. And, you know, the coach that worked with us last week, Sam, he's a former school counselor in suburban Philadelphia, great deal of experience and insight into social emotional learning. By all accounts, our committees truly enjoyed working with him and look forward to future engagement with him. His coaching ties directly to our guest speakers on Friday, in which again, we're emphasizing the importance of developing those caring relationships between our students and their families and, you know, our educators here at all grade levels. So we look forward to continuing that work with Sam and Dr. Margie Jones. Margie Jones is specializing in restorative practices right now at the high school level and she'll merge that work into our middle school as well as we move throughout the remainder of this school year and into the summer. It's just a sort of a alternative approach to student discipline and restorative practices. So we appreciate their efforts thus far and look forward to continuing that relationship in future years.
Yeah, I want to thank Chris. This is the priority of the districts as well as an expectation. This is the priority of the districts as well as an expectation of the state and also just the fact that it's needed coming out of the post-COVID world. And really it was needed and it's been around prior to COVID, but after two years of a pandemic, a disrupted educational experience, it's important now, more important now than ever that we become proficient in social emotional learning as an organization. So I'm thanking for that. In regards to COVID, last Wednesday was the day that, March 2nd, that the mask mandate was lifted in New York State. And if you look around, there was nobody at this table. But Mrs. Graham chooses to continue to wear one and that's certainly fine. We have a number of students and staff who continue to wear them and with good reason. COVID is still in our community. It's not something that is press a button, March 2nd, COVID is gone. We still have staff members and students who are testing positive for COVID. That's certainly something that's worthy of mentioning. But the fact is, it has decreased dramatically and to see the smiles on these students' faces. Chris and I went and read, read across America at Kingsborough last week on Wednesday, that day. And to see those smiles, little toothless smiles of first graders was amazing. It was, it was a wonderful day and they were so pleased and everything was funny to them. I read a book that didn't have any pictures and they still laughed. So it was a great day. It's great to see across all the buildings, the vast majority of students and staff are electing not to wear masks. I don't see anybody being harassed or picked on who continues to wear masks. I don't think anybody's being pressured to do, to wear masks or not to wear a mask. It should be an individual choice, a family choice with the infection rate as low as it is. And we hope it certainly continues to trend downwards so that it is something that we don't need to talk about. Mr. Dean Majestris may have further information on it. He did send out a post, Parent Square regarding some of the other protocols that are still in place. I think people had a misunderstanding that when the mask mandate was lifted, that all things COVID went away and that's just not the case. People were positive, still have expectations for masking when they are allowed to return from quarantine. There's certainly not the level of oversight and, I don't want to say interference, but there's oversight and mandates from the state or the health department. For that, we're grateful as an organization, that people have choice, but there is still mandates out there. And if anybody has any questions or concerns, if you can't find it on our district platform, social media platforms or website, please contact Mr. Dean Majestris regarding that. And last but not least, I want to thank Kathy for her work on the budget. She's got kind of like a thousand yard view of it right now to share with the board. And obviously we're still examining budget requests and she will have a much more detailed report later this month, but right now I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kathy.
Hi, everyone. So business office staff are currently working with the administrative team to firm up BOC's special education and staffing requests, and I will have a detailed presentation at the March 28th meeting. At first blush, with all the requests included, and I mean everything that everyone asked for, the budget is up approximately 4.6%. I'm confident that this will not be the final increase as there are several expenditures that require further discussion and scrutiny. Also, at the March 28th meeting, I will be presenting a resolution for approval of a separate proposition to be added to the ballot for 366 passenger buses and one plow truck. These will be funded using the school bus and vehicle purchase reserve like we did last year. The cost of the buses is $404,000 and the plow truck is $65,000. On the revenue side, the governor's proposal has the district receiving an increase of approximately $979,008. The property tax cap is 1.45% or $224,736. And we will be using $1,650,000 as a transfer from the debt service reserve fund to cover the local share of debt service. Again, a more detailed revenue report will be provided at the next meeting. We will be much closer to the April 1st state budget deadline, so I'm hopeful that the state aid figures will be more precise. Any questions? I know that was a pretty high view, but, you know, we're still working on the expenditure side, so.
The, I think the good news of this is that, you know, the cap is, we're not, the good news is that 1.46% of the cap will never have any tensions going beyond that. And we're at a position where we can be very surgical and use a scalpel and looking at what's been requested from the administration. You know, we're not looking to hire just for sake of hiring, but we, you know, I mentioned part of this report, a number of social emotional concerns we still have, relationship building, attendance problems, a number of things that perhaps we can, we can be strategic about where we add to the organization in order to free up people to ensure our instructional practices are optimal, that are going to get kids to come up this hill, that are going to get parents at the elementary level to really get their kids out of bed and get them to the elementary schools. So that's our challenge for the next two to three weeks is to present to the board a budget and a, and proposals for staffing that we believe that we can justify and rationalize every single thing we put in front of you. So thank you Kathy for your work. You know, this, it is, it is a positive budget season. There's a number of reasons for that. And one of them is sound fiscal oversight by Kathy Meyer and this Board of Education historically. And also there's other reasons with the state, you know, a million dollars more of foundation aid, things like that. That's not a small change. Smart fiscal management, like I said, locally and that windfall of federal money is still there as well. And, you know, we're not looking to live and die on that and it's smart to, to not do that. So thank you Kathy. We'll be more detailed as we go and we do not have any need for executive session unless the board requests it. Thank you. Any other questions? Next item is our administrative report. Mr. Dean Majestris, Athletic Director.
What's that? First, I'd like to thank Superintendent. When we met at the beginning of the year and discussed goals, one of the things I, you know, had mentioned is dealing with COVID on a daily basis. It took a lot, weighed a lot of my time. So physical education was taken off my plate. I hadn't been in a classroom, hadn't had a chance to get in the classroom. So I do appreciate him taking that off my plate and I want to thank the building administrators for doing the observations and taking care of the phys ed piece. But I did reach out to each of the PE staff and told them I was giving a report and I asked them to, you know, provide me what they were doing for this year. The K1-2 buildings, the pre-K1-2 buildings, they try to kind of mirror each other in the units that they're doing. At Kingsborough, we've had, this year we've had three different people that are teaching. Well, one of our teachers is out on, on a leave, so we've had three different teachers there, which has been a challenge for that building. I think we're in a good place right now. We have a young gentleman over there who's doing an outstanding job. So at the K1-2 level, they're working on manipulative skills, locomotor, non locomotor skills. They're doing units in soccer, volleyball, tumbling, throwing and catching. They did something around the Winter Olympics. But all those units are based on team play, or excuse me, not team play, teamwork, working with each other, not so much gameplay, but more learn how they're, to do the skills when they get to the upper levels, how to play these games. 345 building, we have two different teachers over there. They've done units in cooperative games, throwing, catching, four square, pillow polo. They did a new unit of Gaga ball, which I'm not sure exactly what that is, because I haven't been over there. And Stephanie Lott took 23 kids to a Learn Ski Program up to Royal Mountain, so there's 23 kids up there. I think it was over a six week program, yes, six week program. There was 23 students. Also at Boulevard, Shelley Casselli, one of the field hockey coaches, ran a field hockey clinic. Let's see, a couple of weeks ago, she had 59 kids that were in attendance, which was pretty neat to see, 59 kids over there participating. It was boys and girls playing field hockey. And I'm encouraging all of our coaches to go over there to start at that level, to run, you know, a soccer unit, field hockey, basketball, to get those kids interested and hooked so we can tap into them when they get to the middle school. Here at the middle school and at the high school, all the units are three weeks in length. Both middle school and high school do a 10 to 12 minute warmup that focuses on improving and increasing students' heart rate, which I'm not sure if all of you are aware of this. We purchased, I think through, through a brand, heart rate monitors. They've yet to come in. I think they've been ordered for over a year. The reason why we don't have them is the chip. The company that was making the chips, they're not, they're not able to produce them. So when we have them, we're going to have class sets for Boulevard, the middle school and the high school so we can focus on target heart rate. But I know you guys had it when you were at OESJ, but we just don't have that yet, but they've been ordered for over a year now. The other thing we're going to have here at the middle school is on this wall right here, that's the far end of the wall towards the gathering area, we have a rock wall that's going to go in. The bleachers are going to come out, those bleachers on the end. I'm going to see, this building's got to be 23, 24 years old. It may have been out three or four times, so they're not serving a purpose. So we do have a rock wall that's going to go in there. It's going to take 10 days to install it and the target date is mid-July. And then all of our PE teachers will have a training, two day training, so they can, elementary schools can bring their kids to climb the rock wall, high school, middle school staff can utilize that wall. And that was through, the rock wall was through some of the COVID that we have. This past Saturday, seven coaches attended the New York State Strength and Conditioning Clinic at Queensberry High School. There was five guests, four guest speakers, John Martin from Queensberry, he runs it. Zacquann Erby from Shaker was there. Dave Gableman from Union College and Rob Garro from Poly Prep was there at high school. All the speakers are part of the National Strength and Conditioning Association. At one time before COVID, we had a PE class that was, I forget the name of it, Rich. Vance PE. Vance, thank you. Vance PE class. With COVID, we got away from it. So we talked about bringing it back second semester. So all but two classes right now at the high school, the students can choose, either want to play volleyball, basketball, whatever units they're doing, or they win, we're going to call it health and performance instead of what we were calling it. So we sent seven people there, there were supposed, eight were supposed to attend. One of our coaches was down at the state indoor track, so we couldn't attend. So we had seven people attend. And I talked to a couple of coaches that went and what was reassuring is we're not far off what other schools are doing. We're going to incorporate some more things. I know they are reaching out to the Shaker, Strength and Conditioning guy to work with him a little more, try to model what they're currently doing at third place because their room kind of fits what our room has and we're going to try to tailor what they're doing to our needs. So it was good to have our coaches go to that. They did have to leave early because some of their, our coaches in the basketball program, one of our coaches, PE teacher's son was playing, so they did leave a few minutes early to get to the basketball game on Saturday. A quick recap of the winter season. Boys basketball started out 1-6, finished 14-10. A lot of that team was injured or had COVID in the beginning of the season. So they didn't pick up their full team until after the first of the year. So they made a nice run with an eighth seed, beat the number one seed, the four seed, beat a tough Burt Hills team and made it to the Class A championship. Indoor track, Zoe Tessie competed in her first New York State Indoor Track and Field Championship on Saturday on May 5th. I'm going to read a little bit about Zoe. Zoe's a two-sport athlete. She played basketball and she played, obviously, indoor track. She competed in five and she played volleyball, but for the winter she was a two-sport athlete and she'll run track in the spring. She competed in five league meets. She was top in the high jump, top four in the high jump and triple jump in every meet. She had three first post finishes, one second place and one fourth place in the high jump. She had two first place finishes, two third place finishes and one fourth place in the triple jump. She was Section 2 Division 3 champion in a triple jump of 33.7 and a half feet and she was second place in a high jump of 410. That gave her a chance to go to state polls and she qualified for the, she was second place in the high jump with a 5.2 and she was 10th place in the triple jump, which did not qualify for the state meet. She made her first trip to the meet this weekend. She was ranked, we thought she was ranked 20th going in, she was actually seeded 17th and she finished 17th. She jumped 410, which is pretty good for her first trip and it's pretty intimidating. I talked to the coaches and she was a little nervous. You go down to Ocean Breeze Complex, it's, it's a pretty neat facility, so she was a little nervous, but, you know, we're proud of her efforts and our coaches' efforts of getting her to the state meet. Swimming, had an outstanding season. Jeremiah Hughes placed second in Division 2 at the Section 2 diving championships and Justin Kemp placed third at the Section 2 diving championships. There were some issues at, there were some issues at the diving meet where a couple of our divers were DQ'd on a certain dive and no one could figure out why they were DQ'd. I think if they weren't DQ'd, they would have went 1-2, but they finished 2-3rd, which, second, third, which is, is pretty good with the amount of divers that were there. We had 14 of our 15 swimmers qualify for sectionals. Swimming needs a qualifying time. They meet a certain standard in each event, so 14 of our 15 swimmers qualified. 13 went back after the prelims, went back to the finals. In the finals, we had 17 top 16 individual finishes. So 17 of them had 16 individual finishes, top 16, 11 of which were eight top, eight finishes. We had two third place relays and one fourth place, one third place individual swim, two individual champions and 24 of the 26 swims that we had at the sectional meet were PRs, which are personal records, which is, which is outstanding. Dane Dillenbach had a, had a special season. He's a five-year swimmer, five-time Full Hill Council All-Star. He's a five-time team MVP. He's got three sectional champions, championships in multiple events. He's got three Full Hill Council championships. Last year with COVID, there was no sectionals, so we had Full Hill Council, so he's got a total of six championships. He currently holds six individual records and two relay records. So he has eight records here at the school. He's the most decorated swimmer that we've ever had. So this year, he qualified for the states in the 50 free, 100 free, 200 free and 100, the 100 fly. He can only swim in two individual and two relay. Our relay team just missed the stakes, so he chose to swim in the 50 and the 100 free. He qualified for New York State Championships four to five years, the one year was a COVID year, in 14 individual events. That's pretty impressive. He's a New York State medalist. At the New York State Championships as a sophomore in 100 butterfly, he finished 9th in New York State. He placed 10th. He placed in the top 10 in times in New York State as a junior with no sectionals or stakes in the 50 free, 100 free and 100 butterfly. He made his third trip this weekend. I was fortunate enough to go out Friday to watch him swim. And how they do it is, there might have been seven or eight flights in the 50 and 100. He has to come in the top nine to make the A final. That A final, you're going to get your state champion out of. In the 50 free, he was seeded 12th. That's with the public and the Catholic schools involved and he finished sixth. I talked to his dad and I talked to the coaches on his turn, first turn of 50, he didn't miss the wall, but he didn't hit the wall like he was supposed to. He felt if he would have hit the wall, he would have finished in the top four, but he just missed the wall. On the 100 free, he was seeded third, he was seeded second in New York State Public High Schools, third with the Catholic schools. He had the second fastest time going into the finals. They were interviewing the kid who ended up winning the state championship. I kind of looked at him, he was six foot four, very big kid. He said, I kind of backed it down. So we kind of knew that it was going to take a heck of a race for him to beat this kid. This kid's going on to Penn State, going to swim in a full scholarship. So he gets to the finals and on his last turn, the video's on the Instagram page, you see something happen. What happened was he took on some water. He was third going into, he was one, two or three going into the wall on his last turn. He come off the wall in eighth place, took on some water and he finished third. So he made up a lot of his time in that last 25 yards. So he, you know, we're proud of his efforts. I mean, he's the most decorated swimmer that Glover'sville's ever had and he's the only swimmer in history Glover'sville had a top three finish. So it's just pretty impressive and you will, he will be, there's some schools that are very interested in him and he will be a, he'll be a Division 1 kid next year swimming at a very good program. I know he's got some choices to make, but he's, he's got a list of schools and it's going to be interesting when he makes his decision. Are there any questions?
I commend Dane, Zoe, but also Coach Richardson for putting, you know, what you've set out, the number of swimmers performing, you know, that's, Dane's a standout clearly, but obviously Coach Richardson has built a great program. And I commend you for taking it by yourself to go out to Ithaca. As I saw Coach Richardson email, there was no other ADs there, so.
Who's, and you know, Dane's a sort of a nervous, he's worked for the culture, why don't you think?
Well, I think we should bring Dane in and recognize his accomplishments. He's rewritten the record books for that sport in this district.
And he swims out as elementers or beyond on day one. If you can go to one, go to a sectional meet. It's, it's impressive. It's electric. It's like watching Olympics. It's, it's very exciting and the kids compete against each other. They really feed off each other and they respect each other and it's fun to watch. Oh, yeah, I see, I see. Spring sports start on Monday, March 14th. Spring sports, oh, sorry.
Next item is student board member report.
Good evening, everybody. My first topic is opening a school store. So, I've had some suggestions from students asking that we open a school store and I believe, along with many others, that this would be super beneficial to our students at the high school. It could improve how we learn in the classroom. That's just my opinion. Things such as drinks, snacks, pencils, pens, notebooks and others could be sold at the school store. And it's a great way to fundraise money for the school and this could help our students greatly. Our students from the life skills class sell snacks between seventh and eighth period, but for example, students who go to Go Tech like myself in the afternoon can't buy a treat and join in on the fun. Okay, this could help our students in the classroom by giving them that extra bit of energy that we need to push us through the day or it could help us if we forget a pencil or a notebook. So, I hope this is something that we can possibly take into consideration for the near future. My second topic is positive things that our schools have been doing lately. So, our school's been doing many fun and positive things recently and it truly makes me proud to call myself a student of the Gloversville and large school district. Our SCL learning days are very worthwhile and I've been hearing that they've made a wonderful impact on our students and how they've been looking at their choices and their actions throughout their high school career. Another positive thing is the mask mandate. So glad it's been lifted. Can finally take a breather. Also, good luck to our drama club with their production of Fry. Their first show is March 10th at 7:00 PM. Congrats to Dane and Zoe for going to states. Congrats to our basketball team for winning the sectionals game last Thursday and a big congratulations to the Gloversville cheer team for making sectionals over the break.
Thanks. Next, we have recommended items to approve, 8.01 through 17.18. Do you want to need anything pulled out of there? Go on. Comments or discussion on those items? Motion to approve that. Motion by Benny, seconded by Kelly. All in favor? All right, motion to adjourn the meeting then by Benny, seconded by John. All in favor? All right, thank you very much, everyone.